For this, because you've got to pick the exhibits.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you need me to take the call?
Mr. Brendel?
Here.
Victor Villanueva? Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Tantrin?
Here.
Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Donick?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Ms. Loji?
Here.
Chairman Pierceall?
Here. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law. Notice of this meeting was included in a listening meeting sent to the CoStar, the Esper Park Press. It was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, and it's also on the Borough website. I'd like a motion for approval of the meeting from February 25.
I'll make a motion after approval for the minutes.
Mr. Brendel?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tantrin?
Yes.
Mr. Donick?
Yes.
Ms. Loji? Chairman Pierceall?
Yes. We have no correspondence, no old business, and we have -- our new business tonight is the Hewitt application, Z 2016-02. It's an appeal of the zoning official's decision. So with that, I'd like to start the meeting, and Mr. Kittredge is going to give us a little background.
Yes, so just as Chairman indicated, this is the appeal to the zoning officer's decision, which is permitted under the municipal law. That's something we've -- not something that's unique, but perhaps something that we have seen recently with this board, and it's permissible under NJ S 40:55 B-7A and 40:55 B-12. Pursue it to the statute and also case law. Unless there is a specific ordinance within the municipality that requires a notice be provided, no notice is required under municipal language for this proceeding. So Spring Lake Heights does not have an ordinance that requires a notice be provided, which is not unusual in these instances. Mr. Brennan was not required to provide notice or application. We have jurisdiction. We take jurisdiction in this manner. He's appealing the decision of Mr. May. As may, allow him to make his arguments on behalf of his client. But it's -- you'll have the opportunity to listen to his witnesses and also to Mr. May and evaluate the case like you did any case before. It's not a use variance. The applicant is merely here to appeal the zoning officer's decision. There's not an application here for a use variance. So the burden of the applicant is to get a majority decision, not a supermajority decision. Any disagreement with that?
No.
Thanks. Mr. Brendel, you on set?
I am. I want to make a little preliminary statement so that you all know what's going on. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service in the accounts of Spring Lake Heights. Don't work if enough people volunteer, and maybe go along with yours. I know you all must agree, and I know that we're all civic-minded, so I want to thank you for the services you do. I also want to apologize for not giving you the larger set of plans in your package that went out last week. I thought that I had more time, and I called the municipal action to set them out the day before. You all have set a larger plan.
Mr. Brendel, come right there.
Okay.
I didn't know if you were still using this.
No, I'm getting it.
So that's just a larger version of what they already --
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so we don't need to work that.
I just want --
We already have that.
They have it, but I just want them to know about the whole thing, so they can follow along with it. The smaller plans we actually obtained from Borough.
Couldn't see them.
They're the same from 1995. And essentially, if you've read the application, you have a pretty good idea of what this is about. I represent Montesori Academy. Montesori Academy is a New Jersey liability company. Its director is a woman by the name of Lisa Viola, who will be testifying. And what she insisted to do, Montesori has a contract with the county that owns the property, and they would like to move from their present location over on Allenwood Road in Wall to the site, which was formerly the home for Junior Junction, right on Railroad Avenue and The substance of the appeal essentially is that Mr. May, and I understand Mr. May's concerns, and he wants to make sure that the Board and I would, if I was an issue, probably do the same thing he did. What we've had here is Montesori Academy is licensed over the same New Jersey as a child care center, and they have a license, and it's a license for a child care center. Junior Junction was a child care center. Back in 95, when Mr. Hewitt and his brother bought the property, they had followed basically the roadmap, which I'm also included with you. There's a Division of Youth and Families which licenses child care centers in New Jersey. Actually has a little webpage now that says, first thing you do is you go and you check to see whether or not it's property. You check the facility to see if it's a good bit. You check the zoning to see if it's a good one. If it's not property zoning, you go to get a variance. You can ask for a licensing inspection by the Division of Licensing to determine whether or not, if it could come up to standards, whether or not a good house of a child care center. And then ultimately, you get all that in order, and you're able to operate a child care center. So what happened was, at the time, and they'll be testimony, this is just my preliminary statement, but at the time, what happened was that Bob Wenzel was the zoning officer back then, and Tom Brennan, no relation, was the attorney for the Hewitts. And Tom had asked Bob Wenzel for zoning approval, and Bob didn't really have an opinion about it, so he went to Bob Loji, who was then the Borough Attorney. And this is all, by the way, in your files, and has been attached to the appeal, was attached to the application. Bob opined that, hey, you're going to need a use variance, and he was the one who said he, instead of, back then, I guess they didn't really know, but they called it a learning center. So the application came in, and you have the application. The application came in as a learning center. And they came in and they used Chick Gilligan, and we're going to use Chick Gilligan again tonight. Charles Gilligan, engineering from Rial for purposes, she's also a planner, for purposes of obtaining a use variance. And there was a hearing, and the Board, back in 1995, I believe, 1995, oh, one, I think is the name, for the number of resolution granted to use variance. But in the preamble of the variance resolution, it mentions, not in the body of the resolution, but in the preamble of the resolution, the recitals, it says, talks about a nursery school, a preschool, including kindergarten. That's the language of the variance. Where that came from, I don't know. It went from learning center to that, and it should have been all one, it should have been child care center, because that's what the state says, you're supposed to have a zoning license.
I just, I'm looking at the, I'll just read word for word. It says, "To convert the present vacant premises to a preschool learning center for children from infancy to and including kindergarten."
Right. But that's in the preamble, that's kind of the recital.
Yeah, that's right.
So in any event, that's, and so Junior Junction got that. Then they also came in, they needed a site plan at the time. So they came in, and again, they used Charles Gilligan, and Charles Gilligan together with the plans. And they came in and they got a site plan approval from the Board, Board Adjustment. And some of you may have actually been on it at the time. And that, I think, was 2000, 1995, oh, six, I think, was the petition. And that resolution approved the plans that were designed by Mr. Gilligan. Then the Hewitts actually commenced. They got their licensing from the Division of Licensing. Also part, one of the other parts of the hearing, and one of the exhibits to the hearing back at the time, was they had actually gotten a inspection done by the Division of Licensing to determine whether or not, hey, can this building house, this is building up the codes officially, can it house a child care center? And because, interestingly enough, all non-public schools from zero, age zero through age 13, are all licensed as child care centers in New Jersey. So if you were to go on the internet and look up child care center, you would see hundreds of Montesori academies, other types of academies, other types of things of that nature, including nursery schools. So in any event, they, what happened was, was that they also had a guy by the name of John Garasso, who put together a, or Richard Garasso, excuse me, now deceased, was an architect, and he put together a set of plans that were submitted to Sandy Bates, who was the construction official at the time. And Sandy granted three certificates of occupancy for the building, and they were determined to be E, which is education class, that's in the building code, not zoning, but building code, education class types. And after they got their certificate of occupancy, the Hewitts took up business, and they ran the business through till, from '96, I believe, till 2010. I have Mark and Brett and Hewitt here, and they'll testify. And they ran it through 2010, when they no longer conducted the business, and they've been, now have a contract to purchase the business, and we want to put Montesori in there. Now, the license from the state of New Jersey for the child care center known as Junior Junction runs from age zero to age 13. The testimony will be that they had, at maximum, they had 160, oh, by the way, the state of New Jersey back at the time determined that the occupancy for that site could be up to 174. Sandy Bates also, in his certificate of occupancy, said the occupancy was going to be up to about 174, thereabouts, maybe give or take one or two, might be 171, but very close. The Hewitts had 160 students, kids, in that. They went from age two and a half, I believe, to age, I think the oldest were like maybe eight, nine, but they'll tell you. Their license said that they could have anywhere from 174 from zero to age 13. That was their state license. Montesori has the very same life feature, except for Montesori is two and a half to 13. And they have now, they anticipate, assuming they have the proper approval, to be able to, they're going to have 90. And the, additionally, they also have had Division of Licensing come in to determine whether or not they can locate Montesori at this site. And Division of Licensing apparently has changed the formula by which the number of square feet you need, et cetera, et cetera. And now the maximum amount allowed for this site is 144 because of a change in formula. Testimony will be that there's been no change in the site whatsoever at all since the site was approved by, the Gilligan site plan was approved. So we're not asking for any changes to the site whatsoever. And so the sole issue really becomes whether or not Montesori, who is going to have children in excess of age kindergarten, whether or not that is a change in use. And what I will tell you is that, and I want to thank Mr. Gilligan, because of the proper attributes, he came up with me today, and he said that he found a case, Mr. Kittredge, today, Three Elkhorn versus Board of Adjustment, City of New York. It's at 118 NJ Super 453, 459, is a reported law division case in 1972, which said that a private daycare center should be considered comparable to elementary or public nursery schools for purposes of zoning, and the denial of a variance was arbitrary and capricious. So basically, you've got the same use.
Well, not having been told about that case ahead of time.
I apologize. Like I said, I just got it.
I don't know how much we're going to rely on that.
That's fine. That's fine. I don't think, the bottom line is, we're here because we want to assure you, and the folks that are here are mostly people from the Montesori Academy community, Montesori Academy community. And, you know, Violas are very serious people. They are going to be very good neighbors. They are not going to impact. And I guess the decisions, you know, I guess, the question is whether or not there would be an increased intensity, but you're going from 160 down to a max of 144. And I know there was a question about parking, because Joe had asked me, you know, hey, let us know about parking, because of teachers. But apparently, and they'll testify to the formulas, the older you get, the students, the less teachers you need per student. So at 160 kids from two and a half to six, I would require that many more teachers than kids 144, assuming they ever got to 144, from age two and a half through 13. So there's not going to be, there'll be a decrease in intensity, and I'm confident that's what the testimony will show. So that's where we're at. And with that, if I could call my first witness?
I just have a question for you, and it's a procedural matter. What is your position on public comments?
I think of all public, I think every, I think under the Open Public Meetings Act, I think every public meeting has to have a voice in the public.
Here's the dilemma, by the way, I think ultimately, that prevails, but, you know, the difficulty with these type of proceedings is, you didn't notice.
No, nor did we, nor did ours.
I said that right from the beginning.
Right.
But you didn't, you didn't provide notice, you didn't have to, you didn't, there was no publication.
Right.
And the dilemma then is that people who may be a little close by, don't have, don't know about this, don't have the opportunity to speak. And the people with knowledge ahead of time, assuming people are here tonight, are for the opportunity to speak. That's the difficulty with this. However, I always think you err on the side of having public comments. I think you have to have a public comment. I think there's, you know, there's, you know, maybe an issue regarding, is, you know, would everybody be here and have the opportunity to make a public comment if they knew about it? The only thing I would ask is that we do not, there are a lot of people here tonight, certainly are going to be doing the opportunity to be heard. We do not have repetitive comments, the same thing being said over and over again, in fairness to the Board.
And what I would tell, to tell the supporters of Montesori Academy is, these folks are volunteers. It's Holy Thursday.
Yeah.
We'll keep it brief.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call Mark Hewitt.
Mr. Brennan, well, if you could just, why don't we swear everybody in, if you could just identify your witnesses. Everybody come up now, along with Mr. May and Mr. LaBosco, in case we have to hear something from anybody else.
We've got Mark Hewitt, we've got Lisa Viola, we have Brett and Hewitt, we have Charles Gilligan, Chris May, and Mr. LaBosco.
Okay. I just, the people who I don't know, if you could just start with these, your name and address.
Lisa Viola, Avenue 7482. Please call. Captain Gilligan, Avenue 74.
Mark Hewitt.
Katie LeTarras.
Gilligan Engineering, 511 and a half, Union Lane, Rial.
Mr. May and Mr. LaBosco, if you could raise your right hand, please. Do you swear in front of the truth, the whole truth, that nothing will be in today's proceeding? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, why don't you get yourself comfortable here.
Just for the record, Mr. Brennan.
How's it going?
How are you?
Thank you so much. I'm going to need to set up my hands, unfortunately.
Let's go.
I brought my phone. Did we have this one?
Yeah, sure.
Make it P, actually, applicant one.
A1?
That's D.
This is, for the record, is a design grant plan of Gilligan Engineering. It's dated back, most revised 8/23/95. Mr. Hewitt, are you familiar with the properties that housed Junior Junction?
Yes, sir.
And how did you familiar with it?
My brother and I owned it from 1995.
Okay. And back in 1995, did you have occasion to apply to the Borough of Spring Lake Heights for a zoning permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And did you have an attorney at that time?
Yes, sir.
And who was that attorney?
Brennan.
Thomas Brennan?
Thomas Brennan.
Okay. And did Mr. Brennan obtain a letter from Robert Wenzel, the zoning officer?
Yes.
Dated March 1st, 1995?
Yes.
Mark, it's up to you how you want to mark, do you want to show my them individually?
Yeah, why don't we do that, just so we'll make that A2.
That's fine. I'll have Jean do it. A2 will be, for the record, a letter dated March 1st, 1995, from Robert Wenzel to Thomas Mr. Hewitt, let me show you what I've had marked as A2 for purposes of identification. Ask whether or not you can identify this. Is this the letter from Mr. Wenzel to your attorney, Mr. Brennan, back in March 1st?
Yes, sir.
And it dealt with the zoning issue, correct?
Yes.
And in fact, Mr. Wenzel references, by the way, folks, this is in the file from the Borough. References the fact that the property needed a variance, a use variance, as a learning center, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And as a consequence of receiving the March 1st, 1995 letter, did you have, did you and Mr. Brennan pile a development application for a use variance?
Yes, sir.
I like the numbers marked. Okay, for the record, A3 is a three-page development application referencing Mark Hewitt for 2307 Railroad Avenue.
What's the date of that?
That is dated, it's from the Borough's record, and I don't know that it's got a date on It references the letter from March 1st from the zoning officer, that I can tell you. So Mr. Hewitt, let me show you what I've had marked as A3. Can you identify this? Is this the development application you and your brother put in for the property that ultimately became Junior Junction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that, you were asking for a use variance for a learning center, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that was, again, as a result of the letter that you received from March 1st, 1995, indicating that you would need a learning center, correct?
Correct.
And did you, as part of the process of obtaining a use variance, did you hire Charles Gilligan for purposes of making a variance application plan?
Yes, sir.
For the record, A4 is a variance application area map by Gilligan Engineering, sheet one of two and sheet two of two. And it is not dated, but again, it came from the Borough's file on this matter, and I have Mr. Gilligan who will testify about that as well. Mr. Hewitt, let me show you what I've had marked as A4. Is this the variance application plan that you had, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir.
Great. And was there, was there a, was there a hearing in 1995 for purposes, 1995, I think, into 96 for purposes of obtaining a use variance?
Yes, sir.
And was that use variance granted by the Board of Adjustment of the Borough of Spring Lake Heights?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, as part of that process... As part of that process, did you have the Division Youth and Family Services Bureau of Licensing conduct an inspection of the improvement, the building on that property to determine whether or not it could be suitable to house a licensed child care center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A5 is a March 3rd, 1995 letter from Sandra Feldman, Assistant Chief for Date Program Bureau of Licensing, to Chris Hewitt, attaching a courtesy lifesavings, life safety inspection checklist with an occupancy determination. I'm going to ask, Mr. Hewitt, I know it was A5, the March 3rd, letter that you received from the Bureau of Licensing with respect to whether or not this property would be sufficient for a child care center?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I want to direct your attention to, and they, essentially Bureau of Licensing came and inspected the property, right?
Right. We requested a courtesy inspection.
A courtesy inspection to determine whether or not, because you, at that point, I guess you had a...
At that point, it was... At that point in time, I had an ambulance company, so I knew I'd be, I could have the state, you know, having a lot of needs from us when they came in, and I just met them and saw we could meet all the needs.
Okay, and they did a determination about what the occupancy would be, is that correct?
I believe so.
It's on the last page, to serve one hundred seventy-four children, correct?
Yes.
So, the Division of Licensing advised you that you could have up to one hundred seventy-four children, correct?
That's what they did at that time, but the figure, the final figure is one sixty-one.
Okay. All right.
That was their estimate at the time.
Okay.
But with the changes that were made, it came down to one sixty-one.
Okay. And did there come a time that you had, again, hired Mr. Gilligan to go to the Board of Adjustment for purposes of site plan approval?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hewitt, let me show you what I've had marked as A six. For the record, it's a Gilligan Engineering preliminary and final site plan, Junior Junction Learning Center plan consisting of four sheets. And I've asked, and it's the most recently revised, dated eight twenty-three ninety-five. And I asked, is this the plan that you had, Mr. Gilligan, put together for purposes of obtaining site plan approval from the Board of Adjustment of the Borough of Spring Lake Heights?
The developer here or all of them?
All of them. Okay, now, did you, with the site plan, can you go back in front of the Board of Adjustment?
Ah, yes, sir.
And did the Board of Adjustment grant the site plan approval?
Yes, sir.
And the Board of Adjustment cited the site plan approval premissed upon the Gilligan Engineering site plan, correct?
That is correct.
And after you got the use variance and the site plan approval, did there come a time when you needed to implement renovations to bring the building up to code with respect to the Division of Licensing?
Yes.
And did you hire a Richard Grasso, an engineer, for purposes of preparing those plans?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the record, A seven is the Richard Grasso Architect Plans, consisting of three pages for proposed renovations of Junior Junction Preschool Learning Center, two three nine seven Railroad Avenue, Spring Lake Heights.
Two, two three oh seven.
Okay. Is this the architectural plans that you had drawn up so you could do the renovations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And were these submitted to the construction code official in the Borough of Spring Lake Heights?
Yes, sir.
And did you have the renovations conducted in accordance with the Grasso plans?
Yes, sir.
And did you obtain from the construction official of the Borough of Spring Lake Heights certificate of occupancy?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, A three are, actually, A eight, are three certificates of occupancy. One dated eight twenty-three ninety-six for a certificate of occupancy, use group E, second floor only, for an occupancy of ninety-nine persons on the second floor. And then, there's a certificate of occupancy dated eight twenty-eight ninety-five, again, use group E, for change of use to use, to a learning center, with one hundred fifty-eight occupancy on the first floor only. And then, there's a continuing certificate of occupancy, also of eight twenty-eight ninety-five. Same thing, it was first floor only, one fifty-eight occupancy. Are these copies of the certificate of occupancies that were issued by Sandy Raits, the construction official of the Borough of Spring Lake Heights, for Junior Junction? And did you obtain a childcare license from the Department of Children and Families for State of Engineering?
Yes, sir.
Okay, A nine is a childcare license for Junior Junction, and it carries with it a maximum number of children per section, one hundred sixty-one, from ages zero to thirteen. Is this a copy of the childcare license that you obtained? Now, what was the maximum number of children that Junior Junction housed while it was in operation at that premises?
I believe we had enrolled the one hundred and sixty-one. At no time did we have that many in the building, but we had that many enrolled.
And the, the physical plan, the structure of the building, if you were, have you been in the building recently?
Yes.
Okay, if you were to take the plans that Richard Grasso put together and walked in the building, have there been any changes to them?
Since?
The Grasso ones?
No.
So, it's the same structure inside?
Yes.
Since the Borough, the Board of Adjustment of the Borough of Spring Lake Heights approved the site plan of Gilligan, have there been any, any changes to the site?
No, just wear and tear on it, no, the site is...
That's all I have, these witnesses.
I have a question for the witness. Junior Junction, when did that stop functioning as a, as a childcare center? I mean, did, did...
When did children stop functioning?
Two thousand and ten. I was, it was June, I don't remember, maybe this summer, I think it was just June. Graduation.
Since that time, has the building been used for any purposes other than...
No, I have, so, some storage, we have an annex, twenty-five hundred square foot building, which is, I've used it as my personal storage, that's it.
Okay, so, the childcare function ceased, but no other function came in there to be placed in or anything?
You walk in, yeah, but not now.
I have a question. What was each of the students that you hired?
Average, six months through kindergarten is what we gave you to... What, I don't know, what, what's kindergarten? Kindergarten, five or six, around six.
Now, the, the state said that you could draw up to age thirteen.
Correct, correct.
You, in your own mind, never said we're going to have, like, a teenager in the building, you know, a thirteen-year-old, did you?
No, the school was created, because my brother had young, very young children, and so did I. That's, believe it or not, that's the sole reason why we created the school. Brian, Brian, probably is that, end of our year.
So, you also said that you had up to one hundred and sixty-one enrolled?
Enrolled.
But, like, what was the most that you actually had in the building on a given day?
I think, I think it was one forty-three, I think we had, I mean, one forty, around, around one hundred forty students.
And did those students get dropped off across from you at the same time each day?
No, no.
Could you explain that?
Okay, yes, our hours, we gave, we were in the service business, we gave people, we went from six-thirty to six-thirty. So, we worked around you, 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 everybody. Off the tide.
Were most of the students that were enrolled there for, like, you know, the basic day, and then you provided before school and after school, so to speak, you know, care?
Yeah, there was, there was basically regular hours that were, you know, where the teachers went through their day, but there was no part that you had to be there at a specific time.
And the flow of traffic always seemed like it flowed smoothly, you know, dropping off, picking up and so forth?
Never, never problem. We did, we did have a one-way at the time. We were granted that later on, or that was good idea.
And did that continue the whole time you had the establishment?
Yes, and then passed it for a number of years, I think, I'm not sure. I think neighbors said, what for, and got changed back to two-way.
So, it was too late when you, you know, stopped the...
It was still one-way, even several years after. Brian might have had a neighbor, somebody, John might, but I didn't, all of a sudden, it was, you know, it was too late.
I noticed the reading back over the old, you know, testimony, whatever you want to call it, that you were required to have forty parking spaces, but you were granted, you know, a variance to have only twenty. Was that sufficient, and, and did you ever have to just go over on the street?
The most we ever had working in our school, and we had a large number of students in a greater ratio than what they would have, was twenty, twenty teachers, which all didn't drive, but if all we drove, that would be twenty spots. Did some people like to park on the street, yes. Did they have to, no.
Were there ever any complaints by the immediate neighbors about, you know, traffic or anything like that, or parking or things of that nature?
None, no. Maybe on graduation, but I don't remember any, when we had graduation, I mean, they, you know, people were like two blocks away, walking to the school. We did that one evening a year, and the police, the town would block off the street doors, and we had a big event in front of the building.
And I think I have one, you know, final question, and it's about the ages. I think the state probably says, you know, like, two and a half to thirteen, and I'd like to catch up. In your own mind, what age did you grow up to?
No.
About six or seven or eight or something like that?
Um, I'd say seven, yes, we did, we did have children, especially in the aftercare, that were older.
Did, did they come from another school and get dropped off or something like that?
Ah, we had, we offered transportation, but it worked, but generally, we picked up if they were coming after care, but some were dropped off, yes.
So, did you have little, like, small little seat of buses or something like that?
Yes.
And where they parked, where they parked on, on the...
On premise, and behind the building.
And how many, what was that?
The bus?
How many buses did you have?
We had one bus.
One bus?
Yes, one bus driver. And it was basically for service purposes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have one question. Your teachers-to-ratio was what, eight to one, approximately?
Every age it varied. Infant was, we did start it, the infant area was like, I believe, three to one. As you, as you progressed, if you...
They get, they get older?
Right, so, we, we had, in our infant area alone, we had four teachers. And then, the two and a, two and a half, which was a small amount of children, it was like six children, there was one. And then, the three to three and a half, I believe, was one, or three, there was one teacher with six to seven children.
Okay. Who makes that determination, is it the state, the state decides?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt.
I'm going to call Gretchen Hewitt just briefly for the formula with respect to the student ratio.
Does the chairman of the public have any questions or...
Oh.
Is there anyone that's here tonight that has a question for Mr. Hewitt? Don't even sit down, you have to give your own have a question.
Sorry.
Okay, looks good. All right, thank you, Mr. Hewitt.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Gretchen, Gretchen Hewitt. Gretchen, you've heard the testimony of your husband. Could you tell us a little bit more about what the formulas were with respect to the student-teacher ratio?
Yes, the borough consists of six weeks to two and a half. Six weeks to eighteen months was a one to four ratio.
Sure.
Maybe push that over a little bit?
I will, yep, yep.
Did you have, do you want me to repeat what I just said?
Yes.
Six weeks to eighteen months was one to four. Eighteen months to two was one to five. And two to two and a half was one to six. And then, two and a half to three was one to eight. Three to four was one to ten. Four-year-olds was one to twelve. And then, five, and that was one to fifteen. And I believe it probably got bigger. I know my students in their schools have more than fifteen students in a class with one teacher.
That's all I have.
Yeah, anybody on the board? I, I have another question for you. A lot has happened in the world since you opened your school, I guess, nineteen ninety-five, is that correct? Okay. With regards to safety, you know, we had nine eleven, we had online, we had all this. How did, how did you change in your school over that period of time?
We increased security, we increased, you know, the watchful playground area. We had teachers positioned in certain positions. And we had a lot, we had the office position right as you came through the front door. And that was so that if somebody was in the office, so we could see who was coming in and out. There were parents that expressed an interest in a security lock door. He didn't go that far, completely closed down. And it was before nine eleven.
Did you ever have security cameras or anything like that?
We did not.
Just a question, security cameras and things like that, that's not required by the Bureau of Licensing?
It was not. We were up to code, the state comes to inspect every year to make sure that you're up to code, sometimes twice a year, depending on what they're scheduled.
And, and you having a license shows that you've met all the requirements the state would need.
We have, we have our state regulations.
Okay, before you go, to see if there's anybody involved, is there anybody that has anything that they want to ask of Mr. Hewitt? Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will call Lisa Viola. Lisa, what is Monmouth Montessori Academy LLC?
It is a Montessori school, by now four angels, three to move ahead. We follow the Montessori principles, you know, school, and we started it.
Hewitt, can you just speak a little bit louder?
We started the school... We started the school, this is our fourth year right now, our school, and we're growing, so, you know, we're looking to experience it.
And where are you located at presently?
Seventeen hundred Allen Road in Ball County.
And as part of the process of becoming a Monmouth, of becoming a functioning Monmouth Montessori Academy, did you have to obtain a license from the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And what is the license for?
A child.
Mr. Kid, what number do you have us stopping at?
This week.
Eight, ten.
Eight, nine.
No, I'm sorry, eight, ten.
For the record, eight, ten is a license from the State of New Jersey Department of Children and Families Child Care Center for Monmouth Montessori Academy LLC. Mrs. Viola, can I show you what's marked eight, ten and ask you to please identify what is it?
This is our state license. We are also inspected every year on a annual basis. We need to follow all of the code in order to get the license. Our license for the ages of two and a half to thirteen.
By the way, I didn't ask you, are you, what is your function with respect to the liability company? You're a member, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're the member manager, correct?
Yes.
Okay, are you the director of the school?
Yes.
And what is the, your, your current license over there at Monmouth on Allen the Road, what is the maximum number of children?
Forty-three.
And what are the ages for the license?
Two and a half to fifteen.
And why is it, Monmouth Montessori, why is it, why is it you want to go beyond the age of like six or seven?
Because in Montessori, we have, we do have several families that would like to stay and continue on beyond kindergarten. So I think that's included myself, and I have about three children. When we started it, we were thinking, figuring out eventually that it can quickly, that our children and the other children are ready to move on to the next level. We were age group, so the elementary is actually the next level, so that's possible for six.
Okay, and what, assuming you were, when, when you realized, obviously you had growing pains over there on Allen the Road, right? And as a consequence, did you go looking for another site?
Yes.
And find a site?
Yes.
And what is that site?
Junior Junction.
Okay. And did you contact the owner of Junior Junction?
Yes.
And did you enter into a contract with that owner?
Yes, I did.
And is that contract, you have that contract present, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And did you come at time, did it come at time that you made an application for a zoning permit?
Yes.
Can I show you what's eight, ten? For the record, it's a, it's a three-page document, a zoning permit with a narrative, which also references different exhibits, which you should have.
Eleven.
At, at A eleven. Mrs. Viola, let me show you what I've had marked as A eleven. Is this the zoning permit with your signature down at the bottom?
Correct.
And you made application to the borough's greenhouse types, correct? And was that application granted? Okay, Mrs. Viola, let me show you what I've had marked as eight, twelve. For the record, it's the February twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen denial of zoning permit. And ask if you can identify this. Is this the denial that you received?
Yes.
And after the denial, did you file a notice of appeal to the borough's greenhouse types?
Yes.
Okay, eight, thirteen is a copy of the March tenth, two thousand sixteen notice of appeal. Mrs. Viola, let me show you what I've had marked as eight, thirteen. Is that the notice of appeal that you filed? Or you had to file on the year? Brings us to your turn, right?
Correct.
Okay, now. You heard Mrs. Gretchen Hewitt talk about the formulas with respect to the ratio between the children. And I think she went up to age, I won't be able to.
Seven.
Seven, okay. Beyond age seven, do you know what the ratios are?
I think, I'm not exactly certain exactly, but I believe that once they are six, I think Gretchen said six is one teacher, age six is one teacher for every fifteen students. Beyond that, it expands so that it's more like a public school where you can have the entire classroom per one teacher.
Okay, and unfortunately, you will have to have the Division of Licensing report, yeah? That you guys did. Okay. Did you have the Division of Licensing come and do an inspection?
Yes, they do the courtesy inspection, that's your job.
Okay, and did they make a determination of what the maximum number of students you could have?
Yes.
And what was that?
One forty-four.
Okay, and why the difference between the one sixty-one and the one forty-four?
There is a new law that, they have a new code that they now require more square footage per child. So even though the measure was in the mouse, they're less.
And have you been inside, have you been inside Junior Junction? And have you been inside Junior Junction with the grasso plants? And it are, what's depicted on the grasso plants, is that the physical plant of Junior Junction present? And have you been to the exterior, inspected the exterior of the Junior Junction site? And you have done it in conjunction with the Gilligan Site Plan? And is the Gilligan Site Plan depict the present physical exterior, exterior of the site, of the site? Now, with respect to teachers, how many teachers do you have now?
Five.
Okay. And when you, assuming you were, and you're gonna finish the year out over there in Allenwood?
Yes.
And assuming you're able to locate at the Junior Junction site, how many students do you anticipate having beginning in September?
Right now we have three classrooms for children, and next year we're adding two more classrooms to that.
And how many teachers would you add?
We'll be adding, we'll have nine teachers.
And as the kids grow older, do you anticipate adding additional teachers or subtracting teachers potentially?
As they grow older, I think, we'll always, the plan is that we'll have those Friday, Friday night classes with the younger children. And then as they grow older, we will grow into those classrooms that will be empty next year. And, but we won't subtract, subtract.
Do you ever anticipate having twenty teachers? Okay, do you ever anticipate having more than, you don't anticipate ever having one hundred and sixty-one students?
No.
Okay, in fact, the most that you would be able to have is one forty-four, correct? Okay. You understand that in moving into a site which has been permitted based upon a certain site, correct? So you understand that there's limitations. If you want to make changes to the site itself, you're gonna need to seek variance relief. You're gonna have to come back in front of this board and say, hey, I want to change the site. You understand that, right? So you understand that there's limitations with respect to the site, subject to the Gilligan Site Plan that was approved, right? You also understand that there were building code certificates of occupancy that were issued, correct? And they were premeditated on the grasso plan, right? And you also understand that there are limitations to this site based upon the fact that the certificate of occupancy were issued pursuant to plans that were approved, right? So you understand that those are those limitations. Notwithstanding that, you want to locate there, operate Monmouth Montessori Academy in accordance with the site plan that was previously approved, right? And in accordance with the architectials, which were previously the subject of the certificate of occupancy, correct? Now, in terms of transportation, you, you heard Mr. Hewitt talk about the transportation. Do you anticipate more or less vehicular traffic and why?
I think that we'll have less teachers and we'll have less students, so overall, we just have less.
You heard that the maximum number of students in occupancy at Junior Junction was one hundred and forty-three. There was an enrollment of one sixty-one, but there was an in occupancy, the maximum number was one forty-three, right? Right? Do you ever anticipate reaching that number? Are, are the, with Monmouth Montessori, or with Montessori Academy, do you, do you service families?
Yes.
Okay, and do they generally carpool?
Yes.
Okay. So it is, do you anticipate that there's gonna be, in fact, less traffic because of the fact that you got them?
Yes, and siblings. So as they get older, there'll be one car to three children rather than all the children are four and five.
That's all I have.
Any questions from the board? I have one question. You had, you had put into evidence about the license that the Montessori has, is that correct? Your license is a childcare center with the specific provisions for the ages two and a half to thirteen, is that correct?
Yes.
So your license is actually different than Junior Junction's license?
They actually had younger into.
Right, so the Junior Junction license was for a different age group? Is that correct?
There's different ages.
Started at zero.
Right, so the licenses aren't good the same?
Well, they're not, they're not same in terms of category, but they are certain services with respect to childcare center. I mean, the licenses group themselves are different.
Yes, yeah, the top, but then at the bottom they're different.
Right.
I think they're the same in that there, including two and a half to thirteen.
Can you secure a license from zero to thirteen?
I could, but for the, for the younger into the half, it's a little stringent, which I, Junior Junction does have those rules in place.
So in other words, what you're saying is because you're going into a new building, you'd be able to meet the stringency so that you could expand your license to zero to thirteen?
But we are using the space for the older, three to six.
When you had your preliminary, nothing done by the state, did someone from the state come actually there and walk through it and whatnot? Did they, do they make safety recommendations? Or do they make recommendations as to updating facilities, because, you know, what you have might not be adequate today as it was?
Yes.
Yeah, and yes.
I have a better twelve-page checklist.
Could you just maybe highlight a couple of the things that stand out in your mind, like, you know, what they could do, you know?
The playground equipment is no longer available.
So you would.
Have to remove that. There is one structure in the playground that they said we couldn't keep, that we would have to block it out and put some sort of padding there. So there have, there are changes every year, so we outlaw everything there.
Do you have intentions of keeping the playground and adding to it? Well, you've got apparently some, some of those pieces of equipment you can't have.
Right.
You may have intentions of adding more playground.
So, so you wouldn't really have a playground per se, like you just today?
We would like to add a garden.
In that, in that location?
Playground off to the side is really going, only going to have that one structure that they allow.
And you have older children coming to the school, and you have up to ten, and you want to go up to thirteen. Do you anticipate any of those children walking to school? Or do most of your kids come on their own?
Yeah, on their own.
Do you ever draw people from the local community though?
Yes.
You might have ten, or maybe twelve, people walking back and forth to school. Is that happening?
Gary's riding his bike with his son.
So you could have, you could have children either riding a bike to school or walking to the school. And I think if I remember, I did see on the plan, is there a proposed extra playground in the back?
The, the plan, Mr. Gilligan.
Is there proposed by another playground in the back?
No, I think, no, I think the plan, Mr. Gilligan will testify as to the status of the plan.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if you already have the playground and not, and that's unfortunate. Adding new equipment, I was just wondering if that proposed playground was also going to be, continue to be a playground at this time.
Very quick one, please, thanks. Perhaps the Division of Licensing came down, giving the approval for one hundred and forty-four students? Division of Licensing goes to state group? Is this Montessori specific that they're giving this on the floor?
No, they, the state, for any childcare center that is not a public school, the state has, they only require an E use, and then they come in, according to them coming, and they decide the ages. And they, and most of those agents or all those requirements are based on buyer, state, the, and anything.
So the state will look at any facility and make the determination based on just that, not what type of school it is or anything?
Mostly safety.
All right, thank you.
Speaking of safety, do you have like lockdown procedures and things of that nature in the practice regularly?
It's not required by the state, but the state provides information and meeting, attorney.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I have one question. With the older kids entering the school, will there be a recess where the kids would be going outside playing in the area? And with that, do you plan on putting in coops up or any other forms of structure?
We don't, we don't have coops. Montessori kids are really like gardeners and. So they create their own food, they do things in nature. So there'll be plenty of structures.
Anyone from the public?
I just have one question.
You should go first, you have to identify yourself.
My name's Mike Viola. Mike, yeah. Okay, bring up your chair.
You should go first.
So, so the mic can pick up?
Yeah. All right, so go directly, my name is Mike Viola. And I'll form it in a question.
Daddy has a question.
So, so you have, you currently run a childcare center, and you have a license for that childcare center. And it's, what age is, is that licensed here?
Thirteen.
So, and how old is your oldest student in the school?
We have one ten-year-old.
So when you decided that you were outgrowing the building that you're in, you started to look for another building, and you found one that you loved. And what made you think that that building might be sufficient? Did you inquire as to whether or not they had a childcare license and what age you went to? Did you inquire as to whether or not they had a childcare license and what age you went to?
I think because the building fell down.
So, just for the record, did you decide that since you both had the same license, it might be a good thing?
And also, I just wanted to know that we have seven elementary students right now? Twelve?
Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you for your time.
I'll call Charles Gilligan this time. This is the excerpt. Let's get you certified as a business owner.
All right, you want to tell us about yourself, Mr. Gilligan?
Charles Gilligan, licensed engineer and planner. I've been with the board many times. Practice, most of my practice is in Monmouth Moshe County. Licensed engineer, licensed planner, grad student at University of Notre Dame, masters in Rutgers in civil engineering. And I've been there several times.
Thank you.
Before I start, John had read an excerpt from Cox. And I'll point to Jill here too. And you guys are going to share it too, okay? You and the rest of the board, because that's always wrong.
You did mention you were dressed like Torey tonight.
Okay, okay. Mr. Gilligan, it's part, you obviously were the creator of the original variance application and site plan back in 1995, '96, right?
True.
You've heard the testimony of Mr. Hewitt. Do you have anything to add to elaborate on that at all, your recollections of the hearing or any of that?
That's true, we first went and got the, we got the variance first. And then we came a second time for the site plan.
Okay. Do you, just take a look at the plans and just, if you would, just identify them and let us know whether or not, whether or not they have true copies of the plans. They did come from the boroughs.
Before we get to that, Mr. Gilligan was kind enough to hand out this case. And you referenced this case before. I just want to make it clear, we're not here for a use variance.
No, I know that.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is a, so I think this is relevant.
It's instructive.
Instructive and perhaps more helpful if you were here for a use variance, if you're not, or something.
Right. In any event, you saw A-6, right?
True.
And just take a look at A-6 and tell me whether or not, in fact, this is a true copy of your variance, like your site plan back at the time?
Yes, it is.
And then, you're familiar with your work from A-4, which is the variance plan, correct?
Correct.
All right. Have you taken your plans and gone and inspected the site at this point?
I have. I inspected the site just to see, compared it to actually the drawing they drew on the board, which you guys all have a copy of. And, and just to see that if things have changed or things that were built. There were a few discrepancies over the original approval. Either they were waived during construction or have deteriorated since 1995. But there's a few things that I think need to be upgraded, but the basic bones of the original approval is there. There were some items that I noted. Like for instance, the parking area needs some stone, needs some timber curving, which was part of the original approval. There were some space, parking spaces to the south. And Mr. Youth had said that when they were putting in the space, there's a tree there, and the tree is still there. So they decided, I guess, the approval was that they could work around the tree. That area is grass, that area should probably be cut out. The tree could probably still be saved. And gravel, just like the rest of the sites of the parking is up to, up to the requirement. That, everything is pretty much the same, just maintenance required, cleanup in the back required. But like I'm saying, the basic bones of your approval is, is there.
Your plan, interestingly enough, because the two-way street came up. The plan that you originally put together that was approved by the board, did it provide for two-way or one-way traffic on Railroad Avenue?
Yeah, two-way traffic.
So the plan that was approved had two-way traffic?
True.
Okay.
And that's what it says today?
Two-way traffic.
Two-way traffic, right.
Okay. As part of the, of your process of preparing for tonight's testimony, did you have an opportunity to survey a provision regarding the proper steps in getting a license from a childcare center, as a childcare center?
Yes.
Okay. Let me show you what I've had marked as A-14. For the record, it's a single-page printout from a webpage for the State of New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Family Development. And it talks about how you would go about obtaining a license for a childcare center, correct?
Correct.
And in fact, it says that you identified a potential site, right?
True.
And then you go to the construction official and the zoning official determine whether or not it's properly zoned, right?
Correct.
And then if it's not properly zoned, you go and seek a use variance, right?
True.
And then, once you secure the variance, you would obtain a certificate of occupancy as a, a different use group under the construction code, right?
Right, this one is specifically is educational.
And, okay. And in fact, that's what happened back at the time, except for the nomenclature of the variance came in with something other than childcare centers, is that right?
That's true.
Okay. But essentially, what's supposed to be the zoning, supposed to be, the zoning application, the variance should have been for a childcare center, right?
Well, let me address my, the handout I just gave everybody regarding childcare center.
Okay.
And just, just to refer to that document, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to take a look at it there. That is an excerpt from Cox. And it basically says that it should be held that private daycare centers should be considered comparable to elementary or public nursery schools for the purposes of zoning. And then a denial of request of variance was arbitrary and breach. So basically, childcare center, elementary school, nursery school, from a zoning standpoint, are all the same.
So was that one from 1972 in New York City or something?
It was in Newark.
In Newark?
Yeah, in New Jersey.
And that, did you get a chance to go actually, take a look at the website of the Department of Children and Families with respect to licensee search to see how these things are licensed?
I, I did look, see what I could find regarding childcare centers in New Jersey. And there's 3,925 of them in the state of New Jersey. So these, these are not, they're plentiful.
And how many of those are, are there Montessori academies?
Yes, yes, there are.
Are there, are there nursery schools types of?
Exactly, yes.
Private?
Yes.
Have you had an opportunity, do you have an opinion as a planner with respect to whether or not the site, you've heard the testimony from the Hewitts, you've heard the testimony from Mrs. Viola?
True.
Do you have an opinion with respect to whether or not the operation of Monmouth Montessori at this site would bring about a greater intensity of use or a lesser intensity of use?
Actually, I think there would be a little bit less. And just let me explain, obviously their licenses are very similar. One license goes from zero to 13, that's Junior Junction. The new license on is two and a half to 13. Very similar, I believe it was testified that they could get to zero to 13 if they really wanted to. So you could get the same exact license there, if that is a catch point with the board. The other thing is that the maximum children per session allowed, Junior Junction was rated at 161. The Montessori is going to be 144, there's a reduction there. The staff, Junior Junction had a maximum 30, maximum staff. Montessori has 11 now, and they anticipate 13 and maybe a little bit more. But nowhere near are they going to get to 20, as previous to testify. And again, Junior Junction had 30. So I think there would be a decrease in, in the activity then.
Okay. So let me ask you this, from a, from a planning point of view, is there a distinction between, is there a distinction for purposes of zoning with respect to the age of students that might be utilizing the facility?
It goes to 13. Once you read elementary school is the end of it. Zero elementary school is all the same bracket, same, and looked upon as the same from a zoning standpoint.
So it matters not what the ages are within the building from a zoning point of view?
As long as it's 13 and below, yes. And now if they were going to put high school in, it would be a different story. That's all I have.
Board, I need for Mr. Gilligan. Like, it's been like 20 years since, you know, or thereabouts, from the original application in Junior Junction.
Sure, 1995, yeah.
How has your job, what's you to do, has it changed a lot in those 20 years?
My job?
Yes.
Oh, it's become more difficult to get approvals, yeah. And, yeah, there's a lot more interaction with public boards and things like that.
Do you look at properties a little bit differently today than you might have 20 years ago?
Not really. I'm, I'm first an engineer, and I really look on how it's developed, drainage, grading, things like that. Some things have changed, but it's all, all basically the same.
Since you mentioned you have to drain and whatnot, have you relooked at that on the property now? Or, you know, you just assume that it's, you know, everything's the same?
I didn't really specifically look, that was there today. You know, maybe we've had some gaps in rain. It is a stone parking lot, so most of it should percolate in. And there is a grading plan that, you know, they have to change it to make sure it grades. There's the option to do that.
All right. Do you know if it is the intent of the owner to put these improvements in as they are now? If the state is, if so?
I, you know, I spoke to them and told them that they would have some requirements to live up to the obligations of the original site plan approval. And I think they would want to get in there and dress it up, because it's in a little bit of a disarray in the rear. So they're aware, and I think they kind of do improvements anyway.
So specifically to what the plan is?
I, I think you've still got the power to hold them to what the plan originally showed. Now, there might be something with the tree, and maybe somebody else would have to get involved again about the tree in the parking lot to the south. But, you know, that would have to be revisited.
And is there a possibility of any aid required to set like, to some of that?
You know, we had a, we had a handicap space shown in the rear, and we have it 16 feet, which is really the same as required today. It's, is an overall 16 for a loading, an unloading zone and actually a parking zone. And I did notice that there's a handicap space out in Railroad Avenue that does have a handicap sign in front of it.
So you believe that this can be enforced in this site?
I think so, yeah.